Safe, but the best thing she can do is come home.
The U.S. Fire Administration reminds you to protect the heroes who protect our lives. Have a smoke alarm on every floor. Test it monthly. Replace the battery yearly. Do your part to get out before they have to come in.
Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, October 8th, 2012 Eden Prairie Planning Commission. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business on tonight's commission meeting is approval of the agenda. Do I hear any changes to the agenda? Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Second item would be the approval of the minutes from the Monday, September 24th Planning Commission meeting. Are there any changes or revisions?
Just one item I have on page five, Julie. Second paragraph from the bottom. As Pittsrick said, in regard to property tax, he's having a hard time with this development since they do not have to pay taxes. They do not have to pay taxes on the land. Just add those couple of words at the end. Thank you.
Good, I caught the same one. Any other changes or revisions to the minutes?
No, Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes for the September 24th, 2012 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstaining.
And Jake's abstaining. Okay, on to the public hearings. The first public hearing on the agenda tonight is the Home Depot Garden Center Expansion and Truck Rental by Greenberg Farrell. Location, 13100 Valley View Road. The request is for a Plan Unit Development Concept Amendment on 13.16 acres. Plan Unit Development District Review with waivers on 13.16 acres. Zoning District Amendment within the Commercial Regional Service Zoning District on 13.16 acres and a Site Plan Review on 13.16 acres. Could the proponent for this project please come forward and make a short presentation?
Sure. Good evening. My name's David Behrens with Greenberg Farrell. Do you need my address? If so, 21 South Evergreen Avenue, Arlington Heights, Illinois. What we're here for this evening basically is some cleanup issues for Home Depot. For a while now, there's been a great deal of discussion as far as operations with the Home Depot store and display of material, staging of material and so forth. What I've got before you is a proposal to expand the garden center itself and there should be an aerial photo image that we can bring up right in there. Exactly. That shows the expansion of garden center area within the front parking field within this area right here. It's an expansion of about 7,365 square feet and the intent of that expansion is to allow for what used to be on the outside of the garden center and staged and displayed to all be incorporated within that garden center itself. We're extending the ornamental fencing around it, putting in foundations and honestly fixing some sidewalk issues that exist there today because of some heaving that's occurred in front of the store. The second part of the proposal is the addition of, and I just slid it, Penske Truck Rental Program, which is a national program that Home Depot has rolled out for select strategic locations that seem like viable locations for a Penske program. Within your packets, there should be a handout as far as the types of trucks that they rent out, ranging from a simple van to something up to, I believe, 24 feet in size, really for their homeowner to use both taking material from the Home Depot store and also for moving and so forth. As times became more difficult, you find that people are more and more moving themselves and taking care of themselves and it's an opportunity to allow for that. We do have a plan that Federally illustrates exactly and I'll lay that out. And if we could, overall site plan within this area. Again, shows the garden center expansion area. There are some parking stalls that are being eliminated to accommodate that, approximately 32 parking stalls within this area. We've worked with staff to allow for that and to expand out and allow circulation to go through that. Within the Penske Truck Rental area, there's about 16 parking stalls that will be at least dedicated. There's not necessarily going to be eight trucks there all the time, but it's basically set aside to accommodate that as the trucks come and go type of thing. And then you can obviously zoom into the garden center itself within this area and it's really a blown up view. There's some existing islands within those two areas that need to be relocated along with a light pole and some trees themselves, which we will plan on replacing the trees that were lost there within islands that are then built and placed within the front of the garden center itself. So again, it's a housekeeping issue this evening and certainly we've been working with staff and I'm really here to answer any questions specific to it that you might have.
Thank you. We'll come back to you with questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Franson, would you like to present the planner's report?
Mr. Chairman, the staff recommends approval according to the recommendations on page two of the staff report.
Given that this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this subject? Not seeing anyone. Commissioners, questions, comments? If there are no questions or no issues to raise, then is there a motion to be put forth?
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the Plan Unit Development Concept Review on 13.16 acres. Plan Unit Development District Review with waivers on 13.16 acres. Zoning District Amendment within the Commercial Regional Service Zoning District on 13.16 acres and Site Plan Review on 13.16 acres based on plan stamp dated September 28th, 2012 and the staff report dated October 5th, 2012.
Second. Again, a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good luck with the project.
Nice meeting you.
Thanks.
Our next item on the agenda is the planner's report. Mr. Franson?
Actually, I have referred to, uh, David, I know, Jim, Jeremiah.
Happy to have them here.
Thank you. I'm gonna pull this up and then I-
I'm kinda bad.
(laughing). Heard it all before. Got my glasses on. Have a little presentation this evening on LRT. As you see from your agenda, particularly, we're gonna talk about the alternatives for the town center station that are being discussed with the property owners and we'll also talk about alternatives that are being looked at for the operations and maintenance facility as well as kind of just an overview of some things that are coming up that you may want to be aware of and some opportunities to become involved.
They're working here.
Dave, I'm trying to fill some air here while David's filling up the presentation. Looks like it's coming up shortly.
It's reading file. It's a big PowerPoint. (laughing). All right. It is up. There we go. All right, you want to start?
All right, very good. Yeah, I'll start here and then we'll turn it over to David and kind of tag team a little bit. So, good evening, planning commissioners. Happy to be here this evening to provide this update for you. As you can see, the planning for the Southwest LRT has been well underway. I'm sure you've been hearing a lot about it in the paper, et cetera. And this is the green line, as they call it, which of course will go from Eden Prairie into downtown Minneapolis, but it will also connect directly with the central corridor line and take you straight into St. Paul without even changing lines. So, we expect preliminary engineering to start early next year with construction starting in late 2014, maybe early 15, and it opening by late 2018 or early 2019. So, a couple of things that I mentioned that we want to talk about tonight is particularly finding the best location for the LRT station in the Eden Prairie Center area or Town Center as we call it. And that's one of five stations planned in Eden Prairie and I'll talk about those a little bit more, but that's one particular that we want to make walkable and we also want to find the best location potentially for an operations and maintenance facility in Eden Prairie, although that could be at another community as well. And showing you a little bit of, uh, blow up here of the Eden Prairie portion of the lines that you can see the five stations and I think sometimes this works too. I don't, I think you can see that. If we're starting from the west and commuting in on either 212 or Highway 5, the first station we would get to would be Mitchell Station, which would be accessible off of Wallace Road from 212 or off of Mitchell Road from Highway 5. And so that's expected to be a big park and ride station, obviously, collecting a lot of the commuters from the west. And then the next station moving east is the Southwest Station, which is of course where the bus facility is today and there'll be a lot of discussions about how that bus transportation potentially changes to accommodate and address the LRT, perhaps with circulator buses to and from the station or whether some or all of that express bus service remains in conjunction with the LRT. So those decisions are yet to be made. And then the next station as you move to the east is the Town Center Station and this is the one where we anticipate the most movement with regard to the exact station location. Still pretty tentative there. And then moving northeast to get to Golden Triangle Station, which is planned at the east side of the Super Value East Campus lining with 70th Street. And then heading north, the final station in Eden Prairie is the City West Station, which will be developed on the UHG property or five acres that they've set aside for this purpose and again would have a park and ride. Most of these would have some form of park and ride with the exception of the Eden Prairie Town Center Station, which is only expected to have about 100 to 150 parking spaces just to accommodate some of the more local trips to that station. And with that, I'll turn it over to David to talk a little bit about the planning that's going on right now with the Town Center Station area.
All right. Just to give you a little bit more perspective on where the current station is planned for the Town Center, it's right in front of Rosemount, Emerson and Costco and not extremely walkable to the mall and kind of, you know, the retail around the mall. And so that's one of our concerns is that this was meant to be a more walkable station and, you know, right now it's a pretty good hike even to get to Water Tower Apartments in that area. So, this is a big project. It's gonna be over a billion dollars. We want to try to get it right. We know this project's gonna be around for hopefully 50 to 100 years or so. All right. So just to kind of talk a little bit more about some of the criteria that we considered when we looked at alternatives for where the station could be located closer to the mall. Feasibility of looking at a more centrally located walkable town station, obviously that was a big one for us. Minimizing Town Center Station parking. As Janet said, this is not really expected to be a large park and ride. I don't think this is a good part of town to be trying to draw a lot of traffic into and out of. And again, it's the focus is on walkability. So, there are three alternatives that are being evaluated and I'm gonna show you those here in a minute. And so some of the other criteria was ridership potential, close proximity to the housing, employment, entertainment and retail in the area, closer to the Eden Prairie Center, trying to, you know, keep it within about a quarter mile to the mall if possible and maximize potential for redevelopment and reinvestment opportunities around the station was a consideration. And then consider recent investments in the area as well. And then also greater separation from Southwest Station because if we go back here and look at this previous slide, you can see this is Southwest Station, this is the proposed Town Center Station. They're very close together, so we wanted to try to create a little better separation. So, we had a staff group made up of, I think, three or four from our engineering department and maybe three or four from planning that got together and, you know, again, considering the criteria I just outlined, we came up with a few alternatives that we thought made sense to have evaluated further. Alternative A is the area that's depicted by the green hash marks. And basically what we said here is that anywhere within that area, if we could find a place for the station and if we could get the tracks to that area, we think that would be generally a very good location in terms of its proximity to the mall and its proximity to kind of our town center activities and the related uses. If you, you might recall that the original alignment that the staff and the city supported, it actually came right down behind Rosemount, Emerson and Costco and in between Bachmann's and Water Tower in this area here and the station was located kind of right by the Water Tower. That alignment and that location could be realized in this particular alternative. Another possibility might be to bring the tracks down Flying Cloud Drive and to come down Single Tree and then work its way back towards Southwest Station. As you might be aware, the city does own the old Kinder Care, Day Care, which is now Ace Day Care and so that potentially could be a site for the station itself. Alternative B, we basically took that entire hatch area and just kind of moved it east across Flying Cloud Drive to the north area of the mall. This location would be the closest to the mall and there'd be some potential for actually having the station right near or even on the mall property. But again, it could be somewhere along West 78th and possibly even along Leona Road if there's a feasible way to provide the tracks to that location. Alternative C basically is the area that's south. It includes kind of Burger King down in the corner, all the way up to Windsor Plaza and takes about half of the Walmart property. And again, we thought this area might make sense, especially in light of the fact that with the Presbyterian Homes redevelopment pending, you know, they're planning on building, as you know, over 700 apartment units for seniors and for general occupancy and that would also include about 50,000 square feet of retail. So, with that in mind, we thought this could be a good location, but to be honest with you, I think this could be the most challenging location to actually get the tracks to and plus finding an actual place for the station itself might be challenging with this alternative. So, once we came up with these alternatives, we wanted to get out and talk with the property owners in the area and so Janet and I and Rick Getcho participated in some of the meetings, but we've met with actually over 53 property owners. We had face-to-face meetings with about 48 of them and some of them we had phone conferences because they live in other states. But we just thought it's, you know, this is an important enough issue where we really need to get feedback from every property owner in the area and we did. I would say that generally speaking, most of them supported the overall project. I think they saw the benefit of having light rail in Eden Prairie. I think they think that it would bring value to their real estate or to their business. And then of course, the owners of the housing, restaurants and entertainment were the most supportive of having the station very close to them, especially the apartments. You know, they were like, get it close enough so our walls don't shake, but yet our tenants can walk out very conveniently and get on a train and go to their job downtown or wherever it might be. The retail and auto-related uses, you know, they didn't see as much value with having the station near them for obvious reasons. I mean, they're more into having cars be attracted to their sites, like if you're a gas station or if you're Midas or if you're Mr. Car Wash. But they did think about the fact that their employees could potentially take the rail to work and if it was relatively walkable, I think, you know, they generally supported it. General growth, the owners of the mall, although they support the overall project, they are apprehensive about having the station on their property and they're primarily concerned about security issues. In fact, that's pretty much dominated their agenda regarding LRT to date. And we don't know a lot about that and so one of the things that we have done since they've raised these concerns is we invited the head of security from the Mall of America and the head of police for the mall detail to come out and talk to us a little bit about what their experience has been. And, you know, generally speaking, they feel like they have a very good handle on security at the mall, but for those of us that have been kind of following the mall the last 20 years, we know there has been, there have been security issues, not all caused by transit, but initially there were quite a few kids taking the bus out to the mall, coming out and causing problems there. But between having the mall security, the city of Bloomington's police force and now the transit security all working together, they feel like they have a very good handle on it. When we asked them more, when we asked them specifically about rail, when light rail was brought to the mall, if they saw an increase in crime and they indicated, no, they did not. But, you know, they've located their satellite station right basically where the transit stop is, which they said has worked well for them. And so we've learned a lot. We've basically offered to general growth and their general manager, you know, to work with them more and, you know, trying to get better educated, I guess, about the potential for some of these issues, but that is to date kind of their primary issue. All of the other owners, like I said, they're generally in favor of the project, but they do have concerns. They have concerns about impacts to their parking. They don't want people to park and, park and hide, I guess is what they call it. Or no, hide and ride. That's, in their parking lots. They're concerned about impacts of construction, you know, and they're concerned about having their access blocked, you know, and so across the board, they all have those issues. So they're like, we are supportive, but, you know, these are our concerns, as they should be. And so we expected to hear that from them and we did. So, the next steps would be having those three alternatives evaluated through the preliminary engineering process, which is hopefully will begin in early 2013 once they select a consultant to start the design of the project. And then also it will be looked at, or they will be looked at as part of the transitional stationary action planning that's gonna start this fall. So, the final determination of where the tracks and the station will be located will need to be determined before the city provides or grants municipal consent, which is expected to take place later in 2013. So, moving on to the operations and maintenance facility, as you may know, they do need a facility like this to be able to maintain the trains and at this point, they're basically looking at the city of Minneapolis and Eden Prairie as potential locations for that facility. I should add however, that the project office has told us that once they bring on the consultant and engineering firm to actually do the preliminary engineering, they may relook at Hopkins and St. Louis Parks just to see that there aren't sites that might make sense for this facility as well. But to date, they've been looking primarily at Minneapolis and Eden Prairie. The building, they need about 10 to 15 acres. I don't quite remember how big the building is. It's fairly large, but you can see there's an example of the Hiawatha Station. I don't know that the station out here would be quite this large, but that gives you an idea of kind of what the layout could look like in Eden Prairie. The facility is expected to employ about 100 people. All right, I kind of covered the locations there. So, the criteria that we considered as we looked for sites, because they basically said to us, if it's in Eden Prairie, we'd like to see it at the end of the line, you know, somewhere over in that Eden property where the last station is. You tell us where you think the best station or best location would be and we'll look at it, similar to the Town Center Station. So, the basic considerations we had is we wanted to minimize impacts to local businesses, minimize impacts to tax capacity. So that is, don't take an existing business if we can help it. Minimize impediments to future stationary transit-oriented development. You know, we recognize that there's potential for redevelopment around that station someday, even though it might be integrated into Eaton's plans today, in 15 years, they could move and there could be great potential for redevelopment. And then obviously to meet the city's aesthetic performance standards. So, basically we came up with two locations that we preferred. The preferred alternative, or I'd say our first choice, would be this area over off of 212, just west of the high school or the middle school. On the other side of 212, there's a fairly large piece of property that's MINDOT right away. And we thought if you could squeeze it in there, it would make sense in that it's already public property. There'd be no impacts to tax capacity. There'd be no impacts to future station TOD. There'd be minimal right-of-way acquisition costs and however, there would be significant additional track needs because right now if the tracks, you know, would terminate someplace over kind of in this area where the station is located, they would need to be extended all the way across and over 212 to get to this location, which we know is gonna be a challenge. They've already indicated that, but even so, we want them to evaluate it in more detail through the PE process. The second area we looked at was basically our Public Works Facility and the property just immediately east of there. You know, we thought that if the tracks came down, if we came in and had a station kind of in this area just immediately east of their manufacturing facility, the tracks could potentially come south like this and could kind of run into the O&amp;M facility down in this area. Obviously, we would have to relocate our Public Works Facility and, you know, we had some thoughts about that. We thought if it got that far, that we could look at the potential of maybe adding on to this property, you know? But that would need to be, that would obviously need to be worked out, but those are the two. Let me just kind of run through here quickly what we thought under this one, let's say, we need to fill the wetlands and that would be a bit of a challenge, but there'd be minimal and no impacts to local businesses, no impacts to tax capacity because that property's already owned by the city, moderate impacts to future station area TOD, minimal right-of-way acquisition costs, but like I said, it would require a new maintenance facility for the city to be constructed. So, we did, back in late 2010, I think it was, we did meet with all of the property owners in that area and we basically updated them on the fact that there could be an O&amp;M facility in Eden Prairie and kind of got their input. And as you might imagine, they were concerned about their property being taken through eminent domain. They're concerned about track location and the impacts to their access and parking and noise and vibrations were also mentioned by several of the property owners. But they are aware that there is planning going- But they are aware that there is planning going on and that, you know, and that this would need to be sorted out next year as they start the PE process. So, next step, similar to the Town Center situation, they'll evaluate these two locations. They might even want us to look at some other locations in Eden Prairie, and they'll look at the feasibility of what site works or does not work. And then, and make a final determination sometime next year prior to the city granting municipal consent. And then with that, I will turn it back over to Janet, and she'll give you some updates on a few other things, and then we'll have time for questions.
Thanks, David. Commissioners, just to wrap this up and give you, again, the opportunity to comment on this project and also to become more involved, the draft environmental impact statement is ready to be released, actually, this Friday, October 12th, and that starts the 60-day comment period, and all citizens and stakeholders can comment as individuals on the DEIS. And we are actually going to have an open house and a public hearing here at City Center on November 29th. And the open house, there'll be boards set up outside of the council chambers, starting at 5:00 PM, and the public hearing then will move in here at 6:00 PM. So, we're anxious to hear. We've been getting the word out. David has distributed this information to all those businesses, that he started an email list of, and, you know, hoping to get good attendance and add to the comments and the considerations on this project. David also talked about the transitional station area action planning. We do expect that there will be some public processes along the way during that year-long study. It's actually being run by the county, their community works portion of the county, but they are looking at the cities as partners in this. And also, there's iteration and collaboration with the project office to make sure that as we look at different alternatives for stations, that it works from an engineering perspective as well. So, we'll keep you posted. That contract is just in the process of being approved at the county, so we'll be starting to work with those consultants soon. That'll be HKGI. And then, another initiative that I wanted to mention, which will also provide some opportunities, potentially, for planning commissioners to get involved, is the LISC Corridor Development Initiative. And LISC is an organization that's both national, and they have a base here in the Twin Cities, and they have gotten involved in trying to support communities that are seeing these rail projects come in, and even just with general community development types of initiatives. And so, we applied through them to get some support with regard to business entrepreneurship in the Town Center area. There's been a lot of interest expressed, particularly with new Americans, but also through the Chamber and other organizations with regard to growing businesses and startups in Eden Prairie. And there's a particular interest in doing so in our Town Center area and being close to the hub of the mall activity and higher-density housing and all the good assets that are in that area. So, LISC is actually going to help the city with a process to look at, as we're considering station areas and looking at the development potential around them, that we consider very closely how to best integrate business growth and entrepreneurship into particularly this Town Center area. So, we're just getting started with trying to design that process and figure out how to integrate it into this TSAP, as we call it, and the preliminary engineering as well, and kind of pull all these puzzle pieces together. But we will be looking for some people to actually talk with us about how best to organize that process, and then to actually get involved in a charrette type of setting, where there'll be several meetings and hands-on opportunities to try to talk about the best way to develop this future LRT station area. And with that, I think we'll take any questions and comments that you might have at this time.
Thanks so much. Commissioners?
Just, thank you very much. That was, that was very informative. I had, I had just a couple of questions. One, among the people that you surveyed, I didn't hear a lot about net economic gain for the city of Eden Prairie. I heard about convenience, which certainly makes sense, infusion of new demographics into the city and things like that, but I didn't hear a lot about net economic gain. And I'll, I'll tell you why I'm asking about that. I'm wondering, from the standpoint of the city of Eden Prairie, are the criteria, are the objectives and criteria for why we might want LRT in our city clear? An example is one of the, and I'm just making this up, but is one of the, one of the possible objectives that we want to, we want to create incremental consumer spending in the city of Eden Prairie. Because when you start to look at those various locations, I could ask myself, "What's the best location to create incremental consumer spending based upon my latest understanding of where we're going commercially in the city?" So, first question was, I didn't hear a lot about net economic gain. And the second one was, I wasn't sure, I thought you had some nice criteria there, but I wasn't sure that we had the city's economic interests represented in those criteria.
Good questions. I think we kind of started in the middle of the paragraph with regard to LRT, because this has been a very lengthy process of about a decade so far of discussing LRT and how to best position LRT within Eden Prairie, and is it, in fact, the right thing for Eden Prairie? And so, kind of stepping back from, we were talking more with regard to specific locations of the Town Center Station and some of the criteria for that area. But stepping back, Eden Prairie did consider LRT with regard to the broader economic benefits, as well as how to best serve the community, our residents, as well as our business citizens. And that started way back in the alternatives analysis, when there were many different potential locations for the LRT line itself. And also, you know, the consideration for stations and exactly where they would be was very, very conceptual, and many, many alternatives were considered. And Eden Prairie did make a very specific determination that it's important for LRT to serve the high-density residential areas, as well as the higher-density business areas and employment concentrations in the city. And so, the, one of the initial alternatives was what we consider kind of our trail corridor today, but that's actually owned by Hennepin County Regional Railroad Authority. And that alternative was alive and well until about two years ago, when the alternatives analysis was complete. But it was never the preference of the city of Eden Prairie, because Eden Prairie felt that just goes through the backyards of residents. It doesn't really serve walkability to high-density residential areas, or the business community, or aid economic development, because there really weren't redevelopment areas along that corridor. So, it has been a much bigger-picture discussion, excuse me, up until now. And while staff is comfortable that we've gotten that kind of direction from the city, and the city has been clear in its preferred alternative being in the general location now, with the exception that the city council's on record that alternatives should be explored in the Town Center area, that that does not best serve the business and residential community, being pushed so far north onto technology drive. So, those kinds of discussions have taken place, and there's also a regional group called the Itasca Group that's composed of some of the largest employers in the state who have also looked at LRT and done economic analysis of both Southwest LRT and other lines in the area. And there's a full study, and we can give you a link to that if you're interested in looking at what that has found as well.
Well, I, I thank you for the comments. I guess kind of what I'm saying, the idea of transporting people back and forth is very clear. Convenience for employees and employers and things like that. And you get an intermixing of demographics, which I think is also interesting. I'm wondering if in, if when, if we, when we're looking at these alternative sites, had, and maybe we do, a pretty specific understanding of what we think the economic benefit for LRT, for the city of Eden Prairie is, and what the components of that are, that might help us select the locations more carefully. So, another example would be, is there a certain consumer demographic that we like to attract to the city, because they typically spend more discretionary income on certain kinds of things that we happen to have outlets selling? And so, to me, and once again, it may exist, being pretty specific about the economic case for the city itself may be helpful in doing some more detailed, having some more detailed discussion about the locations.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Schultz.
Dave and Janet, thanks for the presentation. It was well thought out, and, yeah, this has been an interesting process from start to finish. I can remember when we were talking about the Southwest Corridor and kind of, just kind of debating about that location. When we, when you talked earlier tonight about the maintenance facilities, I guess my only concern would be, and I know there's going to be traffic flow studies coming up, whether to have the maintenance facility in the city of Eden Prairie's current maintenance facility or adjacent to 212. I guess my concern is just to, you know, take a look at, well, I like the primary location, but just to take into consideration, which I know you will, you know, how that disrupts other traffic flow throughout the city as well, you know, especially if it's coming to the current city of Eden Prairie maintenance facility as opposed to 212. I think it's going to be a little bit more obtrusive, if you will, to non-LRT traffic as opposed to the location adjacent to 212. So, just a comment.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Pitts.
Thank you. I really appreciate the work you two have done on this. A couple of points about the alternatives for Town Center. On alternative A, if you could take a look, I think, at maybe sliding that a little further to the southwest, so that it's like at Single Tree Lane and Prairie Center Drive, kind of where Bachmann's is, I think that gets us closer to the real potential for redevelopment. That if you look at like the Bachmann's site, the Jake's Restaurant, and then especially over to Green Mill and that whole piece of property, and then you're also closer to Presbyterian Homes across the street and all that. I think that just a little shift in that direction would be really helpful, because otherwise Walmart becomes kind of an island of non-city center that we have to work around. And I think the more we can move the city center so that Walmart isn't in the middle of the space that we're trying to redevelop, the better off we're going to be. And then, on alternative C, down by the Burger King, I wonder if an option would be to actually place the station on the Presbyterian Homes side of the road, but not have the parking there, and do a walkway across there, a bridge walkway, and have the parking and support redevelopment, again, at the Green Mill place and all that. And one of the real benefits of trying to locate it in that Presbyterian Homes location is not only does it support that development, and then Green Mill redevelopment and all that, but now we're real close to that magic half-mile with the fountain-placed apartments. And the almost magic one mile, you know, gets us to Eden Place Apartments. And when, if we look out 10, 20, 30 years from now, those are huge redevelopment potentials that could just have an unbelievable impact in our community. And so, I think, you know, that's the most expensive alternative, for sure. But when you look at the potential benefit, I think there might be something really pretty magical about that. And then, similar to Kevin's comment on the maintenance facility, you know, if we were to do the second alternative by the city's maintenance facility, that would really limit the development potential, redevelopment potential for that whole station, and I think that would be kind of a shame to lose out on that. But thank you again. Really appreciate the work you're doing on it.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Oh, there's more.
One point on the maintenance facility. I assume this is something some city's going to get stuck with? I'm being serious, though. Nobody wants this, right?
We haven't been vying for it, no. And I think the size is the concern.
Right. I don't see why they'd ever want it in the middle, in Hopkins, so they have to start the morning driving to one end, or I don't know how they, I guess you need to start the, start the trains in the middle, but I don't know.
Yeah, we're told it's not ideal to be in the middle, and yet Hiawatha is in the middle. So, it can be done. It can, it can be accommodated, but it's not ideal. They would prefer that it's at what I like to call the beginning of the line.
Sure, sure. And then, and then one point, I had never heard about the potential for it actually being on the mall property. Would that be on the, kind of, the north side there? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's kind of the, the south end of that area B. I don't know if we can pull this back up again. It's on the screen now, but, yeah, there it is. So, yeah, this, this area B does extend south far enough where it does catch some of the mall property?
Okay.
This was the mall's least favorite alternative, with their initial onsite manager's reaction. And they're, they're running it up the chain and asking more questions about security and that kind of thing. We also spoke to Target, and they didn't have a strong opinion about the different alternatives. I think they, you know, want to stay involved and look more at the details.
I should mention that I also talked to Sears, because Target and Sears and Kohl's are all separately owned parcels. And, and I did amazingly get to the right people at Sears, which I've been trying for years. I finally did. But they, you know, they didn't have a strong reaction. I think they, I recall, most of the questions they asked kind of led me to believe that they thought it would bring some value to the real estate. But I was also interested in kind of talking to them about the potential redevelopment of that Sears site, too, because there is so much potential there. I think it's a very underutilized piece of real estate, really. I mean, half the parking lot seems to be empty most days, and they were interested in talking more about that in the future, but, yeah.
But that would create the most distance from the Southwest Station stop, right? I mean, out of all your alternatives?
C, or B?
B, right? Or I guess C, C gets weird, because you're going down and then up, right? Directionally, C gets a little odd?
Yeah, I think B would create the most distance between the stations, which is okay. But in any of these alternatives, it's, you know, it'll be imperative to find a way to get the tracks to those areas, through there with, without, you know, too many, too many, too many impacts to our existing traffic operations. That'll be a major focus and concern of the city, as well as, you know, without taking existing businesses.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioners, do we have other questions?
I just had a quick comment. I know in history, too, what's made different LRT routes successful is thinking about a niche for each station, and people may come just to that station, whether it's not just the residents, but people coming to for that, like, economic gain. So personally, I think it's important to see if we can also bring it by the mall, but I know if we go further south, too, you know, there's great redevelopment potential with retail in addition to residential and office space. So, I think that's important, because we have the office space, we have the Golden Triangle, you know, additional office, and then, like, the Metro Station is kind of your end of the route, everyone coming from Chanhassen and Chaska. So, I think it's important for us to think about those thoughts as well with, are people going to come specifically to Eden Prairie for a certain station?
Yeah, in addition to the overall criteria, I think that's a great point. The niche idea would be a great point. If each station had a story, it's kind of like in London, the stations have stories and so on, so not, not quite the same, but.
Other questions? I have a very quick one, maybe, from Mr. Franzen. Could you take it at a very, very high level on how you see, or how, what role the planning commission will be playing in the near future in some of these discussions?
No, I think you have to look at the light rail as one big development project. So, look at it as making advisory recommendations at the city council when we take a look at the line and the stations, as we move through the municipal consent process over the next year. And as we get into developing some plans around these individual stations, we'll want your advice and recommendations about the type of land use mix we want to have at each one of these stations.
Good. Last opportunity for questions. Mr. Lindahl, Ms. Jeremiah, thank you so much. We very much appreciate the hard work you're putting into this, and also keeping the planning commission up to speed on it. Thank you.
Thank you again sometime, I'm sure. Yep, thank you.
Any other things from a planning, planner's report standpoint? Mr. Franzen?
We'll have four items in the next planning commission meeting. One is going to be a residence hall at the International School. This was something that was identified on their master plan in 1987, but now they're just getting around to building that. We have a modification to the Ridget Riley Creek fifth edition, which was originally two parcels divided into five lots. They're dropping one of the parcels. We're doing a public hearing to tell the residents, "You're only doing two parcels now." We have the first request that I can recall in front of the planning commission. We have the first request that I can recall in front of the Planning Commission for slope ground review about a property owner wanting to build a driveway for access to their property down off of the bluff overlooking Flying Cloud Drive. And I'm trying to think of the last one, but it's escaping me at the moment.
I'm sure it'll be an interesting one.
It'll be interesting.
Okay, members' reports. Are there any members' reports? We did have a note about a Citizens Advisory Committee light rail. Are there, is there anybody I know? No, no updated report there?
Nope.
Continuing business? New business? I think we're time for adjournment. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Consider the meeting adjourned.